All right, it is 4:30. I'd like to welcome all of you here, and if you are able, I'd ask you to stand. And then we'll observe a moment of silence, followed by pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we can have a roll call, please.
Pete Hamel. Sean Brewster.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Okay. We have before the agenda. I have no additions or corrections, so any...
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, yes, Sam.
I would request that Item 4C be amended to include the resolution setting these two, the two franchises for the election on November 5.
Are you okay with that, Sean?
Yes.
Who seconded it?
Wayne.
You're fine with that? Okay, so we will add that into our agenda, Item 4, under 4C. Okay. Roll call.
Hent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right. Now is our time for public comments. If you have anything not related to some of the other items that are showing up on the agenda, I'd ask that you step forward to the microphone and give your name, and then share your comments with us, please. I see no one, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Okay. One notation here. Bailey Augustma is going to agree to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. She is with us today. Bailey, give a wave or stand up, whatever you want there. Thank you for your willingness to serve on that commission. And the SCAT applicant that we're approving today is, his name is Josh Boomgarden. If you want the spelling, I can give it to you afterwards. Okay? All right, roll call on the agenda, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, under 4A. Preston, you're here today. Could you present us a letter?
Good afternoon. And I brought a copy for everyone.
I got one. Yeah, I'll take that one in. I don't have one with all the signatures on it.
I'll let you go ahead and... Essentially, and throughout this process, there's been questions about the support of the employees. We'd initially submitted a letter that was signed by our collective bargaining chair persons, and this would be in addition to that. And this was signed, as a matter of fact, one of the employees signed twice. A little more enthusiastic about it. One of the things that I just want to point out, and I'm going to make this quick, is I would like the council to consider this proposal from the employee side. Two and a half years ago, this legislation was signed into law on the date that it was presented to the governor. And some of the comments that had been made to me by Sheldon, city employees, is that they didn't understand what the big issue was, because the records show that there were no legislators that actually campaigned on that particular topic. And so it kind of come out of the blue, and it went through the House and the Senate in record speed, and was signed and executed into law upon the governor's signature in February of '17. You know, I guess probably the best explanation is that many of these employees were very shocked that, without any mention of there being a previous problem, that this all of a sudden took place. We were, at that exact time, the day before this law was signed by the governor, we were in the room just across the hall here doing negotiations with the city. And because we knew that this was on the horizon and was approaching very quickly, there was a certain amount of pressure that was, you know, part of the equation to get this done before the law actually was changed. And like I said, I would repeat that it would, instead of being enacted July 1, like a lot of the new legislation is, this was enacted upon governor's signature. I'll make no comment, other than, you know, I believe that this was for political purposes. And so, like I said, there's a certain amount of pressure. During that negotiation, there were statements that were made, and I don't know how many members of this council were on the council at that time, as to some changes as to health insurance. Because at that time, in truth, the union employees in the city of Sheldon were the only employees that were contributing to the family portion of the insurance premium. And we, I knew personally, and I had brought this up in negotiations, that I had been made aware that the former city manager, once removed, Scott, had been receiving his insurance for him and his family at no cost. And it had also been brought up, although I did not confirm it at the time, that all of city management, okay, was receiving their health insurance at no cost. The biggest issue we had on the table at the time, and I said, "Two and a half years ago," was the proposal to increase the union member's contribution. And because of the circumstances with the change in the law, and the fact that the city had, during negotiations, made it clear that this change was going to be applied universally to all. And at the time, Sean Hutchinson, I believe, was the city manager. I specifically asked, because of what I'd been told, that the situation was with Mr. Wenya, that this was going to affect all employees equally. And I was assured of that. I don't know how long it took after that, but I was given that assurance that that changed. And we basically, and as our employees found out, as the employees that I represent found out, there was a sense of betrayal, that what they had been told and what we based our decision on had been changed without our knowledge. And that we, again, were the only employees of the city of Sheldon that were making a contribution for dependent insurance coverage. So if you put yourself in the position of these employees, and the first thing that they felt is though that the state was singling them out, and I understand that feeling, and then when we were in negotiations, they felt that the city had taken some advantage of that situation, and then later on, after negotiations were completed, had backtracked on a commitment that they had made to us, and they were quite angry. What we're trying to do now is we're basically trying to change that direction. And so I would ask you to put yourself in their positions, to try to feel what they have felt over the last two and a half years. And we would like this to come, not today. I know we're a man short, but, you know, in the next council meeting, to at least render a decision as to whether the council would stipulate to the contents of the petition. Again, I want to make it clear, this body does not make the decision. The petition will be submitted to PERB, the Public Employment Relations Board, either way. If it's submitted with a stipulation, I've been assured by personnel at PERB that we could be done with that process in about a month. If it's submitted without the stipulation, it would take upwards of two a year. And I have no reason to believe that the outcome would be any different. It's just that we're going to have to backtrack and undo a lot of things if we have to address this a year from now, and go backwards. I would be willing to answer any questions, otherwise that's all I have for you today. Thank you for your time and attention.
Okay, we have options here. We can receive this for information. We can defer action, we can decline, decline action, or oppose the merger. Do you have a recommended motion in front of you?
Should I make a comment before that motion, or after?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Lori Anderson, and I would recommend to the council that you decline this, allow it to go to petition. I'm sorry that some city employees felt betrayed. I want you to think about how taxpayers feel. I have before me, you know, a benefits package that I was just offered from a significant healthcare plan, or from an employee, where single is $69 a month and family is $368. Those of you who sit on this council, who own businesses, I ask you to think about what your employee's requirement is to get family benefits. And ask that you at least make it average. At least make it average, because my healthcare out-of-pocket costs, since the passing of the Affordable Healthcare Plan Act, has gone up significantly to the tune of about $1,000 a month. So all we're asking for, as a representative government and as city employees, that they pay their fair share, when you look at amounts that they're earning for salaries. And I think if you look across the businesses in this community, and what average citizens are having to pay out of pocket, that's all we're asking, is that it be equitable. And to that effect, if you merge these two unions, you take away your opportunity to do that. You take away your opportunity to treat your city employees better, because it's all going to be negotiated by one person. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think we accept this for information at this time. Okay. I'll support that. With that, do you want to make a recommendation of a date for consideration of this request? Not at this point. Okay. Any other comments? So basically, we're taking the letter of support, accepting the letter of support and taking it under advisement at this time. Ready to vote? We have the motion, we have support. Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to Item 4B. Approved payment for substantial completion on the wastewater treatment project, pay request number 16.
Those are actually two separate items. So you need to accept substantial completion...
Oh, right.
And then move on to the pay request.
Okay. Yes.
I make the motion to approve.
The substantial completion you're talking about?
Yep.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
And now on to the second part of that, for pay request number 16. The amount was $105,780.80. Anything you want to report on it, Todd?
Essentially, they're done with work. So if you look on there, the total contract to date is $9.623 million. They've earned $8.9 million. We're holding $446 in retainage yet. This payment would take, would pay for everything of work completed, minus the $400 and some thousand retainage, and then there are some set-offs, so stuff that's still on the punch list. We've taken 200% of the value of the work that's not completed and set off, and taken out of their payment already. So it's everything except for that. There is some bigger items that will come at a later date that will help finish up that contract. No, project's going good, plant's running very well.
Yes.
October 2. Does that work for the tour?
Yes.
Do you want to elaborate on that real quick?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Sam and I have been talking in the office, and some council has asked to see the plant. So the intent right now is to offer, after the council meeting on the 2nd, for anyone in attendance, or anyone from the public, for all that matters, to join us for a quick tour and walk through it, so.
I've got another question. We're thinking on that note, down the road, are you thinking about having maybe a public open house, so that taxpayers can know why their rates went up and what it went for?
If the council so wishes, absolutely.
Because I think that's important key, is the citizens of Sheldon see what, see and how, why their tax, or why their rates went up.
Sure. Do you suggest that this fall yet, Brad, or do you want to discuss that at a later date?
I just want to put it out there, so people have the opportunity to go see the new plan.
I think if we, if I might, I think if we extend multiple opportunities, starting with October 2, and then in between now and then, you and I can get together and find some other dates.
Set some other dates, yeah.
Yeah. Because it's kind of out back, out of sight, and I think we need people to see what their tax dollars went for.
By open house, Brad, do you mean...
Just so the public can go out and see it.
Right. They can come see it, we can have a tour. You're not suggesting that I go buy cases of pop and...
No.
Probably not a good place for finger foods.
Yeah, exactly.
No.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Just put it out there, so they can see what their rate increases went for.
Okay. That's fair.
All right, do we have the motion on the floor? We don't have a motion? Okay, we need a motion for the... Oh, motion to approve the pay request number 16.
Support.
All right. Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to Item C, Consider Mid-American Franchise Election Petition, which was submitted on September 12. And tied into that, too, is the document you have from Sam. Resolution number R19, so on, with a blank behind it. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Sheldon, Iowa, directing that a petition regarding a franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy Company shall be submitted to the Regitor Voters of the City of Sheldon, Iowa, and so on and so forth.
What is your pleasure?
So what's the action item specifically?
To approve the resolution as it's written.
Ms. Clerk, I'm assuming there's been no objections filed to the petition?
Correct. Correct.
I make motion to accept it as written.
Okay. Do you have support for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
So this will get to the auditor in time for the...
Mr.?
Be put on the ballot in November. Okay, great. Moving on then to new business.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Pardon me, if I may. Given the changes in recent, recent changes in election law, we'll actually go to the O'Brien County Auditor, who will be the point person on this election, but there also will be on the ballot for the portions of Sheldon that are in Sioux County.
Oh.
So the Sioux County election commissioner's involved as well.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Then moving on to Item 5A, authorizing a request for a proposal for redevelopment for the properties that we now own as a city. Sunset Motel, DJ's Redemption Services, residential property at 1023 Garfield. Do we have to have separate motions on each one of these?
No. I think one... I have a recommended motion on page 7.
Okay.
I do have a question. Can we put language in that that would have a security deposit or bond of some sort? So if somebody buys these properties, they have X amount of time to clean them up, abate them, or they forfeit their money? Because I don't want down the road that, two years from now, three years from now, we're getting these properties back. And then when it's completed, bare ground, we'll give their deposit back. Our bond, or however.
The invitations do include a condition that the sale be subject to such bonds or sureties as the city deems necessary.
So that could be negotiated at the time?
So that would be potential term of the, any sale that's agreed to. Is that what you had in mind?
Yes. Do we have it in, I mean, do we need to specify X amount of dollars?
I think that, at this point, depending on what proposals come back, what the intended use is, what the particular property involves, it may be different for the various properties. But any sale of the property will go through a public hearing process, and would be preceded by, you know, a proposed resolution of what the sale involves. And at that point, you would have the chance to approve or not approve the sale based on the particular terms that's being put forth. Does that give you the assurance that you're looking for?
I think the bidders or potential buyers need to know that upfront, that there will be a, you know, a deposit or bond or security.
There is a bid security written into it, as it stands now, of $200 or 10%, whichever is greater.
Yeah. So that's the, kind of like the down payment or the bid security, but as an additional condition, there can be a performance bond.
I don't think $200...
That's just one piece of it.
Yeah. I think it needs to be a couple thousand. You know, so we have a guarantee they're going to tear it down, clean it up.
Well, is there language in here that dictates how these particular properties need to be, need the asbestos removed and all that? I mean, is that spelled out in the, will that be spelled out in the purchase agreement, or how does that part work?
It's spelled out, kind of. And I'll use the Sunset Motel as an example. The Sunset, the two, there's basically three major buildings there. The two wings need to be torn down. The house or office can be saved, but it needs some work. And so it depends on the, it depends on the proposals. Now, what Brad is referring to, the $200, that's to come in with the bid. As far as the surety or the bond, that's something that we would negotiate at the time of the award. And I built a, I've got a webpage that's ready to go, and I plan on sending it out, sending out the link later tonight or tomorrow. And I can add language into that as well, that makes it clear that the city is going to, you know, work out some sort of a performance bond, to make sure that the work that they pledged to do is done. And on that note, if I might, there's one clarification that I need to make on the bid sheet for DJ's Redemption Services at 428 West Park. What's loaded into the agenda does not reflect the conversation that I had with Kent Lorenz yesterday, and he, there's a Demco gravity flow wagon and some motorcycle parts on the southwest corner of the building that belong to him, and he's going to get that, remove that within the next month. And so I've updated the bid sheet to reflect that that's not included in the bid. The other item that is reflected, that is mentioned in the bid sheet, is the trailer at the Sunset, that that's not included as part of the property being sold. Everything else is. Would you mind addressing that, the semi-trailer? We haven't talked about that in a little bit. Where, remind me where we are on that.
So Lyle's essentially taking care of that. It's being processed as an abandoned vehicle, because legally, that's what, like I says, we have to do. Fair?
That's fair.
Yeah.
We don't know who owns it?
We do.
We do.
The owner is not available.
Okay.
So I believe Lyle has that in the works.
Okay. All right.
So I'd like to just speak, there is merit to what's being talked about here, as far as getting a performance criteria. What I see, though, is that it'll be difficult for us to set a specific dollar amount for each property, because I think each one will be negotiated separately. But I do believe that we need something in there, so that the people who are bidding it understand that there will be a performance requirement. And then we then negotiate, they're going to want to negotiate that, and then we can agree to that negotiation or not, when it comes for approval. Fair enough?
Each invitation does specifically state it's being offered for sale, subject to bonds or sureties, as the city deems necessary. And it sounds like our city manager will be adding some language to the online material to underscore that condition.
I think with that, then I think that assures that we'll have an opportunity to address that. But I'd hate to put an amount that's way more than what is reasonable for the negotiation at this point, so.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, I guess all I would say is that I would feel comfortable with it, as long as there is specific metrics in there, measurable goals, by which we can decide yea or nay, as far as what the final product is.
Okay. So on the top of page 7, we have a recommended motion. Someone wants to make that motion, or would like to make their own motion?
Top of page 7.
I will read it for those, in case you don't, are not able to find it. The most recommended motion is to authorize invitation to bidders and solicit bids slash proposals on all three properties until 12:00 PM on Friday, November 8, 2019. The city retains the ability to extend the deadlines. Each property shall require a separate bid. The minimum prices are $1,000 for each property, with $500 for abiding property owners. I'll make a motion to approve it, as you've just read it. Okay?
Support. Do we have to do each individual one? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I make another comment before the council members vote? To speak to Mr. Barahona's comment, and some others that have come up today, it's important that the public understands that this is different than the bidding process that you might be used to, in the sense of when we go bid, the work on 16th Street or something like that, where the city, by state law, is required to accept the lowest responsible bid. Okay? That's a statutory construct that is specific to those type of projects. Here, we use the term bid, we've used the term proposal. Really what it is, is an invitation to put together a proposal that meets the criteria of the policy. And then the city staff would look at it and consider various factors to decide what proposal would be in the best interests of the city. And that includes future use, it includes what is being proposed... And that includes the future use, it includes what is being proposed in terms of cleanup, the schedule, and things like that. And this is written in such a way that the city retains discretion to not accept what might be the lowest or highest, excuse me, the highest dollar amount bid or proposal, but what is the best overall proposal. So it's important that the public keep that in mind. It's not merely a matter of dollars and cents.
Yep. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Okay, we are ready for some reports. Anything you would like to share with the chef, Sam?
I don't have anything to add.
Todd?
Lyle?
On the north side of Sheldon High School, there's a trailer, it's called What You Don't See. School advertised it quite a lot. That's open tonight from four till eight. I know some of you have already gone through, but I guess I'd extend an invitation to the public. It's a pretty eye-opening experience. Went through some considerable pains to get it here and kind of had a disappointing turnout last night, so. Any of you would like to be enlightened and learn about some things you're maybe not aware of, I'd welcome you to go.
Seven, at seven.
Could you repeat that through the mic?
Excuse?
What did you say, Todd?
Todd, just that the school has sent out an invitation to parents, children in the school, for a meeting tonight, and I think an opportunity to visit the trailer tonight as well.
Okay. And what is the subject matter of this trailer, for those that don't know?
It's basically set up where there's a number of hidden paraphernalia-related items that are all hid in this trailer. There's a video that the parents watch first, and then they actually can physically go through and learn about different things that kids, places, kids hide things. I promise you, you won't find them all.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman to my left, anything, comments? To my right?
I'm good.
Nothing.
I only have one comment, and that is a public thank you to Chapman Julius, who has served three years of a six-year term on the library board. He is, just yesterday, sent me a letter of resignation, so media, if you could help out with that, to put the word out that there is a position open on the library board for those that are interested, either contact Nicole at the library, or myself, or Sam, somebody in the city office, if you're interested in being, serving on that board.
Mayor, how do our boards look currently as far as membership? Are we still looking at some need for volunteers?
We need one for the zoning commission yet, and I have talked to, I talked to someone yesterday that is considering that. So that's, that was the last one until this resignation. Now there's no one out there yet, so. But otherwise, it's all there, fully staffed, with Bailey's acceptance, that was one other one that.
Perfect.
So we're sitting good.
Awesome.
I have no further comments, so. Motion to adjourn. I'll take one of those as support.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
We are adjourned.